Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
All right, now I have the reporting in progress block. This is the online remote meeting for the town of Leadyard Permanent Municipal Building Committee. This is a special meeting being held on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 via Zoom. The agenda was posted so that, you know, townspeople can dial in if they want. It is 5:00 PM and we, the meeting is now in session and we'll go ahead and start with a roll call, starting with myself, Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
Gary Schneider, member.
Jerry Tominski, member.
Wayne Donaldson, Board of Education.
John Marshall, Town Council.
Steve Munger, non-voting member right now.
Steven June, Silver Petraselli.
Dan Hessler, ONG.
Here comes Kate.
Hey Kate, we're doing roll call, you're just in time.
Oh, good.
All right, Kate, welcome to the meeting and just let you know you are now our quorum, so thank you for being here and Steve Munger's online, but he has been appointed by the Board of Ed, but not again by the Town Council, so he is in limbo land between the two. He can't vote, but we have four voting members online, so we can continue. Outstanding. Again, this is a special meeting. All right, so the first item that we have is minutes approval for the minutes of special mid, special meeting minutes from the 8th of June, 2021, and I'll entertain motions to approve those meeting minutes.
Oh, my, Tim Marshall.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Tominski to approve the meeting minutes.
I can, Gary.
Saying by Mr. Schneider, is there any discussion of the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tomisky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Okay, come on her, bye.
But with that, the guys have it. I see a new number that just dialed up. Oh, that's Mr. Hosey. Welcome to the meeting. All right, so with that, we are, so the minutes are approved. Moving on, we've got Roman numeral number five on our special meeting agenda, which is the Ledger School Improvement Project. So when we last met, right about a month ago, we had gone through that punch list, talked about things that were being repaired. We, since then, I know there's been activity in the schools. I know there was a meeting that was held, I believe, Friday evening. So I'd like to go ahead and turn over to Wayne to discuss that meeting that was just held, that walkthrough and from your perspective, what's been going on, and please start with the middle school.
Okay. The meeting was actually at the Gallup Hill, but I'll start with the middle school. The, we're still having some leak issues on the roof. I did meet with Chris, the roofer, and I believe it was Action Air out there sometime in May. It was determined, or the belief was that it's coming in through the HVAC system. Chris was going to get the contractor out there, Action Air, to replace the door that was damaged by the roofer and seal up some other areas that we thought the rain was coming in. About two and a half, three weeks after that, we got another serious rainstorm and we got a lot of water in the building on that same area. I did contact Chris, who told me that the work hadn't been scheduled until the following week. So, and that was two or three weeks ago now.
So Wayne, was that the same, was that the work to replace the damaged door?
Yes, the damaged door, and they found some other openings on that housing.
All right, and so we don't know if it's the door or not at this point, then?
Correct. Apparently that work wasn't done, or if it was done, it wasn't reported to me that it was. During this last storm, we got a significant amount of water back in the building again in the same exact area. My concern at this point particularly is the fact that this is coming down in the wall between the classroom and the hall. So the bulk of the water is going down inside the wall. So I don't know what we're getting for damage in there or mold buildup or anything like that. We are getting some significant bubbles in the paint at the edge of the ceiling and the wall. And today, or the last storm we had the other day, there was significant water running down the exterior of that wall into the classroom.
Real quick, Wayne, let me just ask you on this, and Dan, please try and chime in if need be. So if in fact this is not Action Air's issue, and this is actually a roofing issue, you know, we have a warranty on the roof for some length of time, does that warranty on the roof provide us any recourse on damage that's done from the leaky roof at this point? Or is that a separate issue? And then secondly, if it's Action Air's, is, is that something Action Air has some, they have responsibility for? Over to Dan.
So to your first question, does your roof warranty cover the interior finishes? I would have to double check. Typically, typically it would. And again, I'll have to go back just to make sure, but usually your roof warranty is an NDL, that, a no dollar limit warranty that covers interior finishes. Stepping back a minute, I don't think it's a roofing related issue. The roofer's been out several times to verify that the membrane is not the issue. Action Air was at that meeting with Chris and Greenwood, as Wayne mentioned a time ago now. When I was, actually met with Wayne last week, the, I found out myself that Action Air hadn't been out there yet. So it's, it's a matter of getting them to, to respond to the, there's two issues at hand. One is the replacement door. I did order the replacement door through the, through York, through JCI for replacement is, has been ordered. It's a, it's a long lead unfortunately, item. But the action, immediate action is for Action Air to get back out on site, investigate the curb potential, you know, whether it's a curb leak, and to seal up the door in a temporary way, so that, so that we're, you know, we can rule out that as, as another point of infiltration.
And do we know when Action Air plans to come out to do that?
I do not at this point, but I will in the morning.
All right.
Reached out, but I didn't get an answer back, and I have a, I'll call the owner tomorrow morning.
All right, and Wayne, I'm sure you're documenting the potential damage inside, so we have some recourse there. Even though we, you know, we have fiscally closed out the middle school, we still have retainage on the Gallup Hill School for Action Air that we could use if there's any issue down the road. So go ahead and continue, Wayne, please.
Yep. There's also a reoccurring leak in the main entry. It's coming down the wall just to left, the set of doors that go into the new section in the building. Rooker's been out three or four times on this one. It's not consistent, so I'm suspecting it may be a driving rain issue when the rain's coming in a certain direction. It's occurring, because we'll get torrential rain and we'll get nothing in there, and then the other day we got it, and you know, it was heavy rain, but I've had heavier rains that we didn't get it at, so I'm starting to think that that is some kind of issue with driving rain, the way it's hitting. We did find a couple of things yesterday when I was out there in the teacher's room on the second floor, found out that the molding or finish underneath the windows was never completed. They had desks and tables against it since the building was built, being used. So it wasn't easily, you know, without moving them, you couldn't see it. The custodians had taken all that furniture out to wax the floor, and when I went in, I saw that, you know, there's no finish under there, you can see the raw wood. And we're also starting to have problems with, at least in one room, with the window sills pulling away from the windows. I did send Dan that information this morning, so it's, that's not something that he's been aware of until he got those, that information this morning. Um, we're still waiting on the fan for, or the VFD unit on, unit three on the roof to be replaced. My last conversation, well, maybe not the last one, but a while back with Dan, was that ONG was picking up the cost of that. I did send him some more information that ONG or Johnson Controls was aware of that well before the warranty was up, and we're supposed to have taken it out and bench tested it, and they never did. So I don't know where that stands, but that unit is still out and not operating properly.
Hey Wayne, we'll jump you back one second to your previous comment on the windows.
Yep.
Is that a integral part of the window itself, or is it a separate piece? In other words, our window warranty that is still in effect, would that be something you expect to be covered under the window warranty? I realize Dan hasn't had a chance to look at that yet, or is that a trim piece separate from the window?
I think it's a trim piece separate from the window. It's a, like a molded shelf that goes on after the window's put in.
So that'd be like a drywall contractor as opposed to the window contractor?
I think so, but John would be, Dan would be more apt to know whose contract that was under.
And lastly, is that in one classroom, a couple of classrooms, or is that in multiple?
Called my attention in one. I will go through and make sure that we're not having a continuous problem, but right now I think it's mainly an isolated incident. It looks like either the window or the piece was not square when it was put in, because it's coming off on about a third of the window, and you can push it back into place, but I would think that if, if it had been totally square, you, the whole thing would shift and not just a portion of it. So it's almost like it's, it was a high point that it's pulling away on because of the stress.
All right, sorry, don't go down that rabbit hole too much right now, but all right.
Okay, I met with Silver Petraselli's engineer on the issue we're having with the water system. His belief, and he was doing some research, he hasn't gotten back to me yet, was that possibly the wrong internal parts were put in the pressure valves to reduce the pressure, and they're also leaking through. So what happens is when the water is used, the pressure goes down into extremely low levels, like down to 20, 40 pounds, then settles at the design, which was around 55 pounds, and then slowly creeps up to about 100 pounds. These are fully maxed out on their adjustment. He believes that the pressure reg, the settings should have been around 25 or 30 pounds, and there's no way to regulate these valves down to this, he believes that was the design pressure. He did ask me for the contact for the water company, which I sent him, so I'm waiting for a response back on that. In a related issue to that, we spent a lot of time researching the sinks. We got Bradley sinks, and it turns out that they have an operating pressure of maximum about 50 pounds, and they're telling us that the problems that we're experiencing are known problems that will occur with these sinks with pressures that are in excess of the design pressure of 50 or 60 pounds. We're running a system at close to 100 pounds.
Yeah, Wayne, question for you. Where do you have pressure gauges on the, on the water system? Do you have them on each side of the pressure reducer?
Yes.
And you're seeing, so my, I have a question back on this, is that these are the water pressure reducers, and then we went to two, based on a direction from Groton Utilities as a precursor for putting water into the building, correct?
That's my understanding, what I've been told. I wasn't here at the time, but that's my understanding.
Right, because we had a change order to change to these two pressure reducers, the way Groton Utilities asked for it to be done. 25 PSI inside the building seems extremely low to me.
And I thought so, too.
I don't think that is the right answer, because if you, you have a three-story building, and if you're bringing 20 PSI, 25 PSI in on floor one, you will have no service on the third floor. I mean, let's just do the math here.
Yep, I agree.
I like to stop there for a minute. Dan, do you have anything more to add on that, or Steve June, from either the engineering team? Anything else you want to clarify, or Dan on this one, because we started out with this as being an issue why there was water hammer out in other buildings, not in ours, and they're trying to trace it to us.
Yeah, well, it's happening in the middle school also now.
You're seeing water hammers there also?
Yes, yes.
Right. Dan, do you or Steve June want to add anything on this?
Yeah, actually, my, the chief mechanical engineer, Wayne, did get back to me. He did send the pictures to the rep for analysis. He's just looking for the plumber's name, which I'll give to him.
Okay.
That's what we said.
Okay.
Yeah, he does, I don't have much input at this point. I don't know enough about what was found in the field. Just to step back a minute and clarify what Wayne had, has said here, is that on the, on the, on the building side of the pressure reducer valve, the building pressure at the, at the water meter location is at what PSI?
Somewhere between 100 to 110.
So yeah, that's where you said, Steve, that 25 is low, 100 is high. You know, we have no reason to see this building, you know, not an engineer, but, you know, 50 to 60 pounds is what you'd want to see at that point.
Right, and Dan, you were the building project manager for the middle school when we installed those, correct?
Yes.
And I think I'm recounting that correctly, the original design was for one pressure regulator, a larger pipe, and Groton Utilities asked for two. If either one of those two fail, it's going to cause the pressure to increase to whatever the failure is for either of the two. We could have one set at 50, and the other, if it's blown and it's putting 100 out, you're going to get 100 PSI.
Yeah, but there's only one install. Well, there's two installed, the one's on a bypass line, so there's only one being used at a time. Depending on which line is feeding it.
Have we switched it?
Yes.
And we saw the difference.
Same problem with the other one, it just doesn't climb as quickly. It maintains closer to the 60 pounds for a longer period before it reaches up close to 100.
All right, and, and do you have to know what, I don't want to turn this into an engineering discussion, what type of pressure reducers they've installed there? Are they?
No.
Spring, or, okay.
I believe they're spring, because the, one thing the engineer said was, the casing is the same, but the guts that come with it are different. And he doesn't believe, based on what he saw on the tag that was put on there, that the right internal springs and stuff were installed for that device.
All right, and there are no pressure relief valves in that system, correct?
I don't think so. There shouldn't be, that I recall, Steve.
There would be.
Just one further, Steve June, who, who was out from, from Silver Petraselli?
That would be Ken Eldridge, our mechanical engineer.
Okay. So I'd like to find what he saw, just get his better understanding of what he saw. Mentioned, or I didn't, maybe you mentioned, I'll be down there tomorrow, and I'll get some eyes on it, and, and see what I can learn just from observation.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let him know, I'll let Ken know.
All right, and hopefully we can get, you know, this is the time to do it, obviously, when the kids aren't in school. We don't want to damage any more equipment inside, obviously with high water pressure. All right, Wayne, would you want to go ahead and continue on the?
Yep. I've got two other things. Basically, the new ladder to the roof in the attic area was installed. Despite instructions by myself and ONG, the contractor installed the enclosure for the stairs on that ladder instead of in the stairwell at the rear of the building where it was supposed to go. Dan's coming out today, or tomorrow, I guess, to take a picture of that and deal with the contractor on it, so he's on top of that.
All right, that's the enclosure to prevent the kids from climbing, students from climbing up onto that.
Correct.
Is the wooden enclosure still there? That was?
The wooden one is still there.
All right, so you, you can't make this stuff up. Now, that ladder, that miscellaneous metals work was one of the last items that we had in the middle school on the actual punch list. Some of those items you brought up today, and you know, roof leaks are under that warranty. And on the, on the actual punch list for LMS, this would tell me, you know, the water pressure thing is just a new development, so to speak. Where are we at now on LMS for true punch list items? We should be down to things we count on our fingers or less.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, the miscellaneous metals had three items on the list. One was to put in the new ladder, the second is to provide the enclosure, which they put in the wrong spot. And then thirdly, to, to provide a grab or, or handrail at the two openings going into the mezzanine. They did not do that work. I have to do, on a since tomorrow to find out why they didn't do that work, and if, and if this new enclosure is really not something that we want to have. One of the comments that, that Wayne made is that it's kind of industrial looking, and it may be a little heavier than what needs to be installed in the stair tower. So I want to dive on that and see if it could be retrofit. So I've got to work with the miscellaneous metals to get that off the list. The last one on the list, besides that, off recollection here, is the, the pull chains on the windows. And so I did have another conversation with Wayne, and I want to go through the building myself tomorrow and see the feasibility of, of using a different attachment. We're currently using a similar, you know, style window shade with a chain pull, and they are fastening it to the window. And, and I think that if there's a mechanism that gets that in place, rather than using adhesive, I'm going to go that route with the last item.
Call me when you're going down, I can meet you there if you want.
Okay. If two little sheet metal screws solve that last problem, that will be great.
Yeah, the warranty was not affected by the, on the current project, and it's not an EFCO window, but it doesn't seem like it's that big a deal.
Okay, and those are all in, are those, some of those internal windows, am I correct, that are inside the conference room area?
Not with the shades, not.
These are external, okay.
Window shades.
All right.
I guess to circle back, it's a culture, it's a solid stone material that's applied to the top of the window sill. So I'll take a look at that tomorrow as well.
All right, and while we're on the middle school here, Dan, did you want anything further on the middle school, or Steve June?
I have one more thing, too.
I'll, I'll jump in and just go over the, the Wayne had mentioned to me that EverSource had done a survey on the power. They charted the power demand, and that may be an impact on, on the VFD failures. We were waiting to see if the change had been made. They were going to, they were going to do a rapid change and recheck.
Yes, that, we had a power failure, and when they came out, they found that one of the legs was 500 volts over what it should be on the primaries, which would have resulted in about a 40, 45 voltage rise in the voltage on the 460 lines, which is very close, they, because Johnson Controls had said they were reading about 510 to 495 to 510, depending it was bouncing. So that would have a significant impact on these.
Wait, what was the, what was the cause of the voltage spike?
They said that it was a misadjustment in their substation. So they went back and, and readjusted things, and I, I'm not going to test, you know, 400 volts, but the, they did come back and say that they brought it into spec and everything was back to an alignment where it should be.
All right, and that was, that's obviously outside our scope, because it's at EverSource.
Correct.
Does EverSource provide, if anything is damaged by that, does EverSource provide the, the town with any type of coverage on that?
They, the gentleman that was out said that, I didn't tell you this, but you should put in a claim.
All right.
So we will.
All right, we'll leave it at that. All right, anything else, Wayne?
Yeah, the last thing was, and Dan is not aware of this, but this afternoon I was in the middle school, and we couldn't get the hold opens on room 310, the magnetic holdings, and 312 to work. Eventually they did, but it took about 15 tries and about three minutes of holding them there. We were going through electrical panels to see if somebody shut the breaker off, and then they finally did hold. But I would kind of expect when you push it back against it, that it should kind of hold without, you know, having the multiple attempts to get it. And we did check to make sure they were flat against the contact and stuff. So I don't know what's going on there, Dan, but something's not right in those two rooms.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just to add your question about the power earlier, your statement.
Yep.
Do we have, if we're talking about VFDs possibly failing due to high voltage coming in on this, is it possible that failures that we've had of VFDs up to now has been potentially a result of, why would EverSource all of a sudden have a problem? Is it reasonable to believe they may have been giving us bad power over the last year or so, at times it's causing VFDs to fail?
Yes. They didn't give me any indication that this was a situation that occurred just recently.
And we have no power conditioners that are installed, anything other than the electronics racks for computers, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, well, this is going to require some more looking and discussion, because if in fact we've been beating up Action Air about failing VFDs and poor equipment, if in fact we have reason to believe we've been getting bad power coming into the building, and that's been causing some of our problems, we've got to reassess several things in this area here. So, and then the other question is, we have the same problem on the other side of town in Gallup Hill School, potentially. You know, when we had the, you know, analog basic systems that were in the old buildings, you know, like we have today in Juliet Long and things, you can play, play with that voltage all over the place and will make a difference. But as anyone knows that has a home generator, you start screwing around with voltage, and you can start having all kinds of problems with electronics and especially variable speed devices where, where voltage is in play. All right.
You may want to have, Dan, you may want to have the electrician take some readings next time he's at Gallup Hill to see.
I'll reach out to Dyson, I'll see if that's something that they, you know, that's something that they can do. Phase differential is a serious concern when it comes to VFDs, they're just very sensitive to phase differentials. And, and it, you know, there may be a record of trips in which, you know, the device will be able to tell us if it was a phase differential or a spike in one particular voltage over the past. Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, we don't have the equipment installed in the schools, nor will we normally to be able to monitor voltage over time and line that up against a failure time in the BMS to say, hey, look, we had a voltage spike here, and this equipment failed the same day. You know, it'd be wonderful to be able to have that kind of information, but you know, we just don't have that kind of equipment installed, so.
And the last time that I did have a, a problem similar to this, it was a pump, and it was EverSource that came out and charted their, their phase differentials to, to prove their, their power was good. It took some twisting, but EverSource did the work, provided the chart, and ultimately, you know, repaired a, a large pump system.
All right. All right, Wayne, if that wraps things with you, I was going to let Dan and then Steve June cover the middle school, and anyone on the committee that wants to chime in, please do, go ahead.
As far as LMS, I have no more information to report. I'll be down there tomorrow. I've got a few tiki-tack items that I want to put eyes on, and as mentioned, primarily I want to knock off those, those last two items, miscellaneous metals and the shades.
All right, Steve June, anything on the middle school?
Nothing on my end, just waiting for the punch list to be completed. Pretty much all the work was over at Gallup Hill.
We should be down to the onesie twosies now on this, and that's great. All right, I know there was a meeting held at Gallup Hill School, and if you want to start out with the, the results of that meeting, and what was involved in that, Wayne, and then we'll go through the school.
Yep. Basically, the meeting was dealt with the exterior work with, with, I forget the contractor, but it was the, everything but the, pretty much the flat work and paving, I believe, if I'm correct, Dan. The flagpole was one item. They tried their best to talk that, that was the best they could do. Apparently that flagpole was different than the one at the middle school. One, the middle school was put in with bolts, and so they can loosen the bolts, slide washers underneath to straighten it out. This one was put in a sleeve and packed with sand, so they have the maximum adjustment that the hole it went in allows. So they're going to have to take the entire concrete base out and report, I guess, from, if I'm correct. So they're, I'm going to schedule that. There are some pads that go underneath, that were supposed to be installed underneath the handicap access pads into the playgrounds. I'm waiting for Steve June, I talked to him finally today on that, he's doing some research on exactly what they're for. Dan and the contractor brought up a concern that if somebody is going down in a wheelchair into that and has one wheel on the hard concrete surface and the other wheel is, you know, in the softer wood chips, that would be an issue. The wood chips are designed to go over the top of the concrete and just provide a little firmer area for people to get in and out of that surface. And the other question was how do they know exactly where the ramp is, so they're lined up with it and not, you know, getting off and toppling over. So when Dan gets back to me- So when Dan gets back to me or Steve gets back to me on the information on that, we can. Look and see whether they're actually needed or not. I'm not sure they are at this point because it is not a huge drop down. The wood chips are really, really close to the level of the asphalt. So you're you're not dropping down a lot. You're just rolling onto the wood chips directly off the asphalt. So I'm not sure what the difference is. Going from the asphalt on to the wood chips or onto wood chips under over a concrete surface. There are some plantings that have died that they're going to come out with. And replace. And they there's some of the stone walls falling apart by the entrance, so they're going to put those back in the place. I think that's pretty much it, Dan, right? The the grass, which. We're gonna live with at this point.
Yep, as far as we actually had two meetings, the first with Steve June and the sidewalk contractor. As you might recall, we 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 contracted the site work with two different contracts, two different trade agreements. One was purely for the pavers and the concrete sidewalks. And then the next was for the remaining scope of work of site work. So the most recent meeting was with the site work contractor Gerber Construction. And we needed to identify what remained as far as the punch list goes. We did have remaining from when I signed off everything essentially, you know, waiting for someone to to backcheck. These concrete pads that that Wayne has just described, so I shared that with. The site work contractor is what I can't understand is why they weren't installed initially. I've been asking, you know, everybody that was involved, you know, have these just not get placed? And what I gathered from that conversation is it fell into an area where. Is it a sidewalk and does it belong to the sidewalk contractor or is it a ramp? And it's not a sidewalk, which means everything other than sidewalks belongs to Gerber Construction. So finding that maybe that was the issue two years ago when when site work was finished up. And then I asked myself, you know, did somebody actually think this through and decide not to put them in? So getting the board of Ed's feedback was important first and now getting Steve's. Input from the design group to see if these is something that should be installed, which which Gerber does. Is responsible for them after the research I've done, which he said he would come back in and get them done. If that's the case, you know, that that clears up the item for me. The other thing was to understand the, you know, the what else is on the site work, you know, we did a lot of work last summer. We replaced a lot of trees. We we improved the planting bed in front of the building. And we walked the site with Wayne and and Gerber and we did identify. Three of the trees that were installed last summer are not, ones failed completely and the other two are dying off prematurely. So. So that was the nature of the Friday's meeting, Friday the ninth. On the second, I met with the sidewalk contractor and we reviewed what was the. You know, what is the problem with the concrete and what types of failures are on Wayne's radar? What we found were documented in a in an email I sent over to Steve June and and Wayne to. To get a get an opinion because what we have are four cracks in sidewalks. They turned, they're not apparent to me to be anything related to the strength or quality of the concrete. They are typical placement shrinkage cracks. Having said that, there's one of them that's opening up slightly and I don't think it's, I think it's in everybody's best interest that these get. Sealed in some way, but I need Steve, I need architectural decision essentially on whether or not they. That that we seal them up or that the contractor is responsible to replace them. But that was the purpose of of the meeting on the second, or maybe it was.
It was the twenty-ninth.
It was it was a week before.
It was two weeks ago today.
Yeah. That was the purpose of that meeting is to just get a, you know, get a real understanding of what the concerns were with the concrete.
And I apologize, I'll follow up with Dean Petraselli.
Hey, Wayne, did you want to add anything on that discussion on the concrete there?
No, it's it's pretty accurate. I am the contractor. Said he was going to replace one of the blocks that he thought that needed to be, or at least that was. My impression from the conversation. But again, the other ones are are. I don't want to say hairline, but they are smaller cracks. That I think probably resolve with some kind of epoxy or something like they did at some of the ones at the middle school. As long as we don't get water penetration in there. Which is going to just exacerbate the situation and make it worse. I think we'd be okay with doing something like that.
If we have a, you know, of all that concrete placement, there's, you know, there's probably fifteen thousand square feet of concrete out there. And and honestly, it's holding up well, but the trade contractor is responsible to make it right as far as these cracks. And he did not come back and do. Do some cleanup work on some splatters and things that that need to be chipped off. So there's a half day's worth of work of that. But overall, I needed to put some context to, you know, what we were talking about with concrete and now I have it.
Understand that and Wayne, did you want to discuss other punchless items in Gallup Hill School? I've seen a lot of emails flying back and forth on items that have been corrected, you know, you know, a wide variety of things going back and forth. Can you? Anything else on that?
Yeah, that's it's a lot of this deals with with Chris Rizzi. I've gotten numerous, you know, from him and and through Dan because Chris said they were closed off. You know, items like the debris on the roof. That I I've been up four times that they've, he said it's cleared off and the same items are still there, razor blades, you know, laying on the roof. Screws, you name it. Dan finally went up with me when we didn't, after we did the outside inspection and. You know, I just showed him and I think he's going to take care of it to get it taken care of. You know, it's 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 same way with the paint that he did in the in the cafeteria and slopped the it all over the molding and everything else. You know, and it's just, it's just frustrating when you get. Things on a punch list that get put off, you know. Five times I got, I think it was on the punch list about the lock on room one fifteen or one sixteen not being keyed properly. And it just comes back. It was keyed by the by the design, by the key schedule. You know, well, what it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a two AA, the seven A. You know, finally, last Friday when we're out there, I pulled the core for Dan. To show him that it's not the two AA it's supposed to be. You know, I I. To some degree, I just don't understand, you know.
There was too many things on the punch list that that honestly, you know, with with that volume and no excuses here. You know, some of the items that were identified as corrected, I wanted to put eyes on myself. And and in doing so, I know that we have some additional work to do. I still can report and I apologize for not sending a an update out to Lisa so she could share. We still have at this time, I have thirty-eight items on open on that punch list. I have twenty-eight that are. Verified complete and that we do, you know, want a back check to get confirmation that we can remove them from the list. But that's where we're at as far as the overall work.
Dan, is that is that twenty-eight on the thirty-eight or is that twenty-eight others?
That's twenty-eight others.
So you you still think there's thirty-eight items remaining on the Gallup Hill punch list? And is this the list that we're still adding things on to that we discover or is this the list that we all agreed upon in the past?
This is the original list with one exception and that is I added, I added the radon fan control. Not control, but the radon fan. Sensor device to this list. Other than that, it's the original list and yes, it is still thirty-eight items. The tracking that I'm doing now is to pick up, you know, completion dates for some of the bigger items. A lot of the items that remain are still related to hardware and door operation. Unfortunately, those are longer lead right now in our in our procurement environment. I won't have product to do the hardware changes and the and the doors until the first week of August. But with those wrapping up and and myself, you know, managing, you know, just other dozen or so items. I see success in the near future to get them down to the onesie twosie stage.
All right, just a quick, another question on that, what is. Your spreadsheet show for the value of the outstanding items approximately?
Well, with the combined items that I think, I don't take the dollar value off until I get a confirming a response from from Wayne. So it's it's skewed. I can't really, it's overall, I have thirty-three thousand dollars, you know, that we put to.
That would include the twenty-eight items that you can take off.
Correct, so your your value is probably, some of the bigger ticket items are still open, like the the doors, the replacement doors are the larger ticket items. I would say, you know, if I was to to have success on the twenty-eight items that I have complete, it would be. You know, a third of that cost and we'd still be sitting around twenty K.
All right, thank you. Steve June, did you want to add anything on the. Lady Middle School?
The Gallup Hill, no, nothing other than, Dan, there was a condensate line that still wasn't corrected. When we were out by the elevator over Gallup Hill.
Yep.
To make sure that was.
It is on, you know, where that particular item was on the site work side and really it should have been on the building side, so I was trying to get through site.
I know Matt and I had talked about that quite a few times.
Really? Wayne and I have talked about it a few times too and and me and Action Air, we talked about it a few times ourselves. We just got to get somebody out there to coral.
With all the rain, with all the rain that we've had, Wayne, the area that was sealed. At Gallup Hill School where we couldn't find where that water was coming from all that time that we did some sealing there, has that proven to be effective?
Yes, I haven't had any leaks there. It's working fine. I had them come back. Last week because we had a lot of water penetration, not active water, but we had a lot of the peeling paint and. Ephorescence coming through on the corner of that door in that hallway. And there was a crack in the foundation, so I asked them to come back and seal that. So I'm still waiting to see.
Foundation from the nineteen sixties, right?
Yep, yep, yep. Now, just so. We did find another item on the roof when we're up there, the signage on all the piping. Was put on and with plastic sheets, which are deteriorating from the sun and cracking and falling off. I believe Steve is working with Dan on that one. Those weren't what was called for by the spec. So they're working on that and, you know, we're halfway through another summer. And we still got the same HVA say issues. You know, we, I haven't seen anything addressed on that severe noise and the. Excuse me, cooling pipes in the room one sixty-eight and one sixty-seven. You know, and we we still have to come up with a solution for one forty-six. You know, we're already halfway through our. Window of getting in without students in the building and teachers.
Wayne, one forty-six is a supplemental heat potential issue, correct?
Correct, yeah, that's the one we couldn't get enough heat in.
Right, and and for Steve June, is is Marty been involved in the noisy pipe issue on this at all or has this been Action Air only?
As far as I know, it's Action Air only, but I can follow up with Marty.
All right, yeah, obviously, we've got about four weeks here to get these things wrapped up before we start getting back into, you know, the mode here, so. Specifically, those couple of items, we don't want this to turn into a, we need to order a bunch of material. And I understand, Dan, that right now ordering material, I mean, even at work, we're trying to replace some doors and things and. That what would normally be thirty days, it's on the truck, it's here. We're talking, you know, many, many months to get things because the construction industry is like that today. And everything costs more money too, there's that, so. In in this case here, the these items we've got to address specifically, the supplemental potential heat in that one classroom. That is perhaps such an easy fix that we just need to make sure it's not going to interfere with anything. Works with the BMS as we have it and, you know, this ain't rocket science, let's get this thing done. And Action Air, you know, if we're at the point where. You know, we're five thousand dollars where the supplemental heat will solve us from six more months of chasing our tail. It must be something unique in that room that's causing this. And if all the engineers in the room, you know, all the king's horses and all the king's men can't figure this out. Sometimes the simplest solution like that cock we found on the back of the building. That was, you know, what, four thousand dollars worth of work if that, I think it was less than that.
Three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, four hundred is what I meant. Yeah, let's let's find the simple solution sometimes instead of chasing our tail forever. You know, granted, we want this to work as designed, but if we get to a point where we just can't balance it that way and it's just not working out for whatever reason. You know, you know, you never know in a building this old as to what is influencing the the climate, so let's move toward that. All right, anything else on the middle school that we need to address here tonight? Okay, all right, with that, any member?
Oh, you're muted.
Any member of the committee that wants to add any additional questions on that, if not, I'm going to move on to next agenda item.
That's Gary. And a comment I'd I'd like to make is is. I don't believe OMG is throwing enough resources at this to to get it done. Dan's managing other projects, this is not his only one. Steve's man from Silver Petraselli, you know, Steve is doing his stuff too, you know, and he's being compensated. But it's getting to the point that we have a contract with OMG and if you go to their webpage, they're the gold standard in construction. And let me tell you, I, this is not even bronze anymore and it's it's got to be an embarrassment, an embarrassment to OMG. It's an embarrassment to us that we keep having to ask stuff to be done and to get done. And I know there's long lead items, I'm pleased, I I understand that, but. You know, OMG is a huge industry. If Action Air doesn't respond, get somebody else there. We have a contract with OMG. And something has got to be put into some resources, even if it's one OMG employee on the ground in Ledger to watch. Look, respond, do something. This is just getting tiring.
And Dan, to as you addressed that, you know, we had we had it up for a couple, you know, months or two there, we had, you know, more senior members of your management involved, phone calls to the mayor and stuff. That seems to have died off some. I know Chris Rizzi's chasing some things, but again. Let's just get this thing done and get this thing closed out and it's in your best interest as well as ours. If you want to respond to that, good, we'll we'll hear that, what you have to say and we can. And if any other members of the committee want to add anything, it's fine.
Well, to Gary's point, I I appreciate the fact that you guys have been as patient thus far. We have had Chris Rizzi as a dedicated resource. He's no longer available as a as a as a dedicated resource and he was able to to move this list from a hundred and twenty items down to where we are today. But notwithstanding, Gary, the 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 point here and the pressure here is to get this wrapped up. We have more resource that's coming, coming online, that's going to step into where Chris was running. And and I will take it to the next level with Action Air. We've, you know, we've let some things slide over the last thirty days. We were really had a had a, you know, finger on the pulse in the prior thirty, so look for that action in the next thirty.
Hey, does anyone have anything else for related to this before we move on to the next item on the agenda? All right. Next item on the agenda would be, we have no change orders, we do have some invoices to pay, I'll go ahead and go through those now. Invoices are attached to your agenda. If you're in an agenda packet, you can just scroll down. If not, you click on the link. First, we have, these are Silver Petraselli and Associates invoices for the month of May activity. They're under our time materials contract, their AI applications, the first is AI application twenty-one dash one-two-one-one. For the Lady Middle School and the amount of six hundred ninety-three dollars that invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Tominski, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of approving the Silver Petraselli invoice? Two-one-one-two-one-one, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jaskowitz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tafama Herb, I.
With that, the eyes have it, that motion is approved. Moving on to item number six, excuse me, item number five on the agenda. Also, an AIA application from Silver Petricelli Associates invoice dated June first twenty twenty one. The amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty eight dollars, time of materials, it's mostly their HVAC engineer. And then some time for Steve June as well. And that is, that invoice is in order, and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Tominski, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowitz, I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tafama Herb, I.
With that, the eyes have it, that motion is approved for payment of the invoice. All right, next, we'll recall a little discussion here. So this is ONG Industries AIA application number thirty four. So this is for the Gallup Hill School. This is not a closeout invoice. This invoice is the amount of one hundred and sixty three thousand ninety three dollars and thirty eight cents. So to keep in mind that the trades that have done their work, until we pay Silver ONG, they don't pay those trades. If you look at that certificate, the certified invoice for payment, you'll see that there's there's still a balance of five hundred and thirty two thousand dollars here, but keep in mind that about four hundred thousand of that is in contingency that'll be never paid. So there's really maybe another hundred and thirty thousand dollars left to be paid on this. We had known going at this point that we had about three hundred thousand dollars left to be paid on the Gallup Hill School. This takes care of a little over half of that. This invoice has been certified as accurate and correct by the architect on the seventh of July. And if you go down in through that AIA document, you'll see where the money is remaining. There is still, there's no payment for Action Air in this, but there's still about thirty thousand dollars remaining there. And you'll see through different trades, you, the painting contractor has some balance to finish and others. If you go through there, some of that's in retainage, some of it's in balance to finish. But this invoice is in order at a ninety percent completion as to where we are on this. So at this point here, that I believe this invoice is in order, and I move that we make payment.
I have a question. On on this one, this this goes back to Gary. As far as the contractors being paid, ONG has a lot of cash flow. Cash is not a problem for ONG. Would we get more attention if we just held somebody's pay?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, ONG is under no obligation to pay any of their subcontractors until we pay you. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's the way our contract is written in your subcontract, or your your prime contracts with them are written. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I I guess my question to you, Gary, is for the some for the contractors that have done their work. Remember, they have, we haven't had a bill on Gallup Hill School now, and my guess is about four months for ONG. Is, maybe it's longer than that, Dan?
I think it's longer than that. Yeah, I hadn't been resolving their costs. So this does represent payments to trades that have been long, you know, long since overdue, and some of the values of the work that was withheld were, you know, far an extent of of what was on a punch list. The the difficulty we have in in not continuing to fund, you know, a lot of the commitments that I've made to get these things moved and 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 completed were agreements to get at least some cash flow back to the trades, and I'd really like to do so.
Steve, just like the last payout was dated six thirty of last year for Gallup Hill.
Has it been that long?
Yes, yep, that was payout number thirty three.
Thanks for that, Steve.
Point, no. ONG can can turn around and pay these contracts. I understand what the contract says. But if the kind, if those subcontractors squeal a little bit more and squeeze ONG, and ONG says, we're not getting paid because we're not getting things done at that project in Ledger, maybe we got a little bit more response. I mean, we've been kicking this thing down the road for years, and it's getting old.
Well, I guess the question we have to ask ourselves here is the the way that this contract is structured, and and Steve June being not ONG on this and being an independent, you know, you understand AIA contracts and these types of things. We have, you know, thirty some trade packages on here, and the trade contractors that have completed their tasks satisfactorily that have not been paid to date. You know, ONG has, again, our contract with them says we pay you, and then their contracts say when they're paid, they pay those. They pay those contractors, which are there, we we think of them as subcontractors, but they're actually prime contracts with ONG. At this point here, the those.
I understand, Steve, if we had, if this had gone smoothly through the whole process, those guys would have been paid a long time ago, and this project would have been over. So we're still kicking the can down the road. And we're back to it. We have thirty eight items on the punch lists that we need to correct. And we keep on coming back to the same punch list. Now, I understand there are some problems that are outside of ONG's concern out of this, particularly the water power, the water issue. That's the town, the city of Groton, Groton Utilities, actually. And then the power out of Northeast Utility. That that's a strange one out of me. I'm surprised we didn't kill somebody. But some of the issues out of this where we're looking, the roof leaks, somebody can't get the ladders done correctly in the building at times. I I mean, that's just getting old. I've been doing this for, with you, about ten years. It's crazy. I agree in paying, paying them, but this is really getting old. I mean, if this was your house, would you put up with it this long?
No.
No. And we're, and just to the point that, you know, there was a hundred and twenty items, and we have twenty eight that are left, and they're difficult to resolve. We've ordered product for what is probably ten to fifteen of those items. And I can, you know, I can tell you that the just due diligence will take care of the balance.
I I I understand, Dan, but what I this whole project should have been done two years. We should have been closed and gone, and everything was fine two years ago. I understand maybe the magnet door doesn't work right and all the rest of it. But we we are, the roof, the leaking, the ladder, come on. This this stuff should have been done months ago. Not like, whoa, when now we have to order an item, that's gonna, that's gonna take us a while because the whole supply chain is screwed up, and we're gonna wait, and wait, and wait, wait. Want to pan, pan, somebody wants to move forward.
Well, one thing I do, I do want to ask you is this, is in this particular case here, with the with the money that is currently, keep in mind that there is money in in every, in invoices that is, that goes to ONG, and there's money in there that is retainage for other contractors. The the small contractor that has an outstanding bill with ONG is not going to be squeezing ONG to be paid money. I can tell you that right now.
Okay, Steve, we don't have any contract directly with the subcontractor.
That is correct.
Only people we have leverage with with the money is ONG. So I I understand the subcontractors, it hurts the subcontractors. But as long as we keep playing this game, we're gonna be in this same situation for a long period of time. This, these meetings are the same month after month.
We could, Jerry, we could make the decision at the committee here to not close out any additional invoices or make additional payments to ONG until the project is complete. If we make that decision, ONG will not pay those subcontractors until we pay them, and we can make that decision as a committee. I'd have to go back and take a look at what our contractual, you know, we have we have recourse against ONG for delay to some degree, and for costs incurred by the town as a result of them taking longer than they were supposed to, and they will be able to come back and say that there are there are things that either A, we're beyond their control, and that would be for someone to decide beyond us. But there are clearly areas that they were, that they did not meet the standard that we would expect on that, and we have incurred costs for that, and we have not closed the art, the door yet on what those costs may be in the future. But the committee can make the decision not to make any additional payments to ONG until one hundred percent of the punch list is complete. And that is a decision for, at this point, we do understand, though, that the second, and in some cases, third order subcontractors will not be paid until ONG is paid. And I guess I'm gonna ask Steve June as an independent, you know, Steve June, you guys work for us, you don't work for ONG. How are these things generally handled?
We can hold back the money. I mean, it is a month and, you know, month till the next meeting. That would give ONG an incentive. That's been done before. I've done that. We've done that on one other project that I know of. But that's, you know, that's up to you, you people.
In 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 that case here, we can have a, this has not been seconded yet. If no one seconds it, that motion will die. And we can have discussion with without it being part of the motion, or we can go to the floor and then vote and make a decision on it. We can go either way on that. And just to let you know, a person that seconds a motion is not obligated to vote yes for the item that they have brought forward. Does everybody understand that? I went to the Roberts Rules of Order training we just had recently. So because someone seconds or makes a motion does not require that individual to vote yes for the motion that they brought forward or they seconded. Everybody understand that? It's not ads. Okay, so with that, we have a motion on the floor for payment on that invoice.
So this is Kate. Can I just, I I have a couple of questions. So we we've discussed in the past the the same points that you just made, that if we don't make our payments, that potentially the subcontractors aren't paid, and some of those are small businesses that rely on these payments to, you know, pay for the roof over their head. And based on that, I know I can't speak for anybody else, but I feel obligated to make those payments. But I don't know if there's if that's truly what would happen. Is that, is there, there truly a cause and effect relationship between us holding back payment and some small carpenter business not being able to buy groceries for their family? I I don't know that that's truly the case.
I can't speak, Kate, to specific people and groceries and things, but I did speak to a one of the trades, one of the the principal, in one of the trades that was working on one of our projects. And they did comment to me that, quote, you realize that we don't get paid till you pay ONG, and it's usually thirty or forty days after ONG gets paid before we get paid. So and and the reason is they were tracking when we had canceled the meeting due to weather or something like that, because that meant we were not gonna pay it till later, then based on our check run, when that was gonna happen, based on other things. So that is, I I believe contractually, that ONG's contracts with them state that they will not be paid till ONG is paid.
Okay.
That question in this meeting, but I'd have to pull those individual contracts to tell you for sure.
I mean, I'd like to understand certain things, like if if somebody, let's say that we have somebody install the the bleachers at the middle school, and they're installed to our satisfaction, we're pleased, we want them to get paid. Can we pay that amount to get them paid without paying the flagpole installer? Because they seem to be incapable of correcting something that was not installed properly. I still don't understand the flagpole thing. I don't know if the contract includes the spec that says it has to be straight up and down, and they can only have a certain angle. You know, leeway, I I don't know why we're, I it just seems like the flagpole thing, we're just throwing our hands up in the air and saying, oh, well, it's hard. So we're not gonna fix it.
Well, my understanding on the flagpole thing is they made the decision they're gonna rip out the entire assembly and put it all back in again, based on the discussion that Dan and just had in Wayne.
Okay.
That's gonna require a a a complete replacement of the flagpole because of the type of installation.
So in that type of case, I would say we would, you know, just using that as an example, it was installed, it wasn't installed to our our liking, we balked at it, they're fixing it, once it's fixed, we pay them, like.
Right. Now, in in this case, the part of this process is that when the architect signs it, they're certifying with that amount, and that that work you know, makes sense for payment. So that's what their signature means. And that that is that the the amount of retainage and the amount of money that has not yet been paid makes sense. That's what the architects as as our independent contractor, because the architect works for us as signing for. When we have in the past not made full payment on something that was submitted to us as a committee, those were when we were being invoiced or billed for something that that we didn't think was correct, but we can make changes to that. Because the AIA application is a series of underlying AI applications, my recommendation would be either we pay the AI application or we pay nothing on it, and we revisit that again. You know, here in the future. One of the things that we, I don't think we have the ability to do is to go line by line through that. Because when we pay ONG an amount of money, it's not exactly, it's not tied directly to a specific item and what we're accepting or not accepting. So if we only gave ONG half of the money, ONG could decide which contractors to pay and which ones not. But those AIA applications kind of kind of roll down. So if that is an issue, and we decide as a committee to not make any additional payments to ONG until we are down to the one or two items or whatever is re deemed reasonable for this based on the delay, we could choose to do that. You know, in our contract, it said, you know, we have a certain number of days from when a application is presented to us properly for payment. I can tell you right now that the, that it was not presented properly to us for payment until after it was signed by the architect. So the, we're in, that was done on the seventh of July. So, you know, we're not yet at the thirty day point when that would then become late. So we could push this, you know, today's the thirteenth of July, we could push this, when's our first meeting in August?
My my point out of this is, is the only lever that we have over ONG at this point is payment. And when ONG, you're saying that all of these underlying subcontractors would not get paid. But almost all of those underlying subcontractors are working on other projects, particularly the ones in Groton. If you drive by where the old West Side Middle School used to be, you'll see the same trucks and the same contractors in there. So maybe if they yell that they're not getting paid at ONG, and ONG saying, oh, it's the Leggerd project that's out of this. Maybe there's a double squeeze on the process here to get this thing taken care of. I don't want to hurt out of it. I don't want to hurt the little guys. That's not my point. I want this thing done, finished. I don't want to hear about it anymore.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and again, for the committee, if we have a second, we can have a vote on this and make a decision. And with each of your votes, you can make your comments as to why you're voting the way you're voting. But at this point here, we 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 have a motion that's on the floor, and we need to make a decision on what we're going to do. Just keeping in mind that we're not at the point where this invoice is late yet, we could push this to our next meeting and and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, when is our August meeting, the second?
It's the second.
Okay, if I can, Steve, I'd like to address Kate's concern and thoughts. Just and and to give some some frame to this particular invoice. So the monies that are in this invoice, as Steve mentioned, go back a year. There's a lot of people who have taken care of their punch lists and their funds, which were more than, you know, adequate to take care of their punch list are included in this current requisition. Following this requisition, which takes the time of approval of this requisition before another one can get generated, only takes us down to where there's about ninety thousand dollars still owed to the trades. The punch list, as we just described, is is in the twenty K mark, but the ninety K is is the is the monies that that to, you know, to to be the hammer for maintaining and getting the rest of this work done. I have a concern personally that not funding these funds to the commitments to the people who have completed their work would not provide the the hammer, but instead would create potentially more animosity on this particular project and getting people back out to do the work.
But Dan, that that's your concern. ONG can reach into its pocket and come up with a ninety grand. That's not an issue for ONG. What I'm getting at here is is that we get some attention, we get, but we don't have a date when this ends. We're, we keep on coming back. We get the the list. The list does not
A month ago that had, that had thirty items taken care of that we're now trying to get signed off. So to your point, though, we have thirty more. I got, I have ordered product to get at least a dozen of those off that list and we are going to get to the end of the list. We don't want this to be anywhere in anybody's radar. But again, to the, to the point of who's being hurt, if we don't move the funds forward, are the people that are not involved in what's left.
ONG can make them whole.
Steve, it's, Steve, it's scary. I, of, of this payment to the sub of the hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, or maybe Steve June can answer this. I was kind of looking through the payment application. What's ONG's cut? What's their guaranteed maximum profit? What is their percentage? I mean, we, we have our problems against ONG, not the subs.
I can, I can answer that for you or Steve too, but it's about in the forty K range.
Cameron, with all that.
Well, I guess my question is from, when we make a payment on that, I don't, and, and Steve June, if you know the answer to this, I don't think we can direct what ONG does or doesn't do with the funds that we pay to them. And that would, you know, there, there is that. And we also have elements of additional costs that have been placed on the town due to delays. Some which could be placed against individual subcontractors like Action Air and other things that are just due to ONG taking too long in the project. So I don't know the answer to that, that we, how we would pick that apart. And what obligation ONG has afterwards, to be honest with you, because if we, if we made payment only of half of that amount of money to ONG, I, you know, it would show up as a, you know, a smaller check. What ONG decides to do with that money, I don't think we have any control over that, to be honest with you. And in fact, John Marshall, are you still on this call?
Yeah, still here.
Hey, John, you work in the construction trades and, and I realize that, you know, you've worked, you know, you know, probably hundreds of projects. Have you, as a, on the construction end of this, ever been in positions where, you know, the person that's building the project or, what is it? Again, these are all jobs that are being done at prevailing wage and things. So are, have you run into these things where bills weren't being paid by people building the buildings? And the general contractor or, in this case, construction manager at risk did not make payment to your firm that was doing the work?
If there is an extensive ongoing punch list, yeah, we didn't get paid till the work was complete. And it's, it's that simple. We just think any money until we're done.
And that's at the
Sometimes we find if we went beyond a certain date.
So has ONG build us, build the town of Ledger for any work that is not yet complete?
No, Kate, that's something I tried to clarify is that with the hundred plus thousand dollars, hundred forty thousand dollars left to bill after this invoice, there's still significant, the short answer to your question is no. We are not billing for anything that's not complete. And we're probably three to four times the value of the work that's not complete, that we still have.
Okay, so what we're paying for is completed work by contractors, but also ONG's time to manage the project, which we have issue with, but perhaps other avenues to address those concerns based on the contract and timeliness. Is that accurate?
Yep. And to, you know, to the point of where the forty K is, the forty K that was billed was actually time that was spent by Mike Brennan last year. That and some direct costs that ONG has recently incurred, I went out and, and spent monies for things to make things right. And so it's, it's putting, you know, the cash back for, say, the projector that we bought or the funding that we have for, you know, JCI to, to do some work because they're in conflict with Action Air.
So is there any sort of assessment that's done or could be provided to us that shows what we were contractually asked to pay for? What you've done to adjudicate some of those problems? I guess basically to show what skin in the game you have to try in good faith to correct these issues that we've raised as concerns.
Yes, actually, part of what I give to, what I gave to Steve to validate the, you know, the billing that, that's in front of you is that the funds that are on punch list items for the trades are identified by that trade contractor. And so that when you see the values that are on that particular line item, if, you know, Steve brought up one which was Action Air. Action Air may show thirty thousand dollars or, you know, I hate to say something inaccurate. So Action Air has a remaining funds of twenty-four thousand on this punch list item or on this last requisition. What they have left to complete in, in resolving the thermostat and, and potentially VFDs. I've held forty thousand dollars at, at the middle school and I have the thirty thousand dollars here. So there's, there's always an accountability for at least double, if not quadruple, the value to a particular trade. The people that are in this particular invoice are the people that have been, you know, that are old, you know, that finish their stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, I was muted, sorry. Is there any additional questions for anyone that's on this call? We've had an extensive discussion before a second has occurred or would not occur. So at this point, the motion is on the floor for payment of this invoice. Again, we have one, at least one additional invoice that's going to come down the road and it's still going to be for a six-digit amount of money. And again, and just to reiterate what you had asked, Kate, every invoice that we have paid ONG on this project since the inception, from the first bill, has been for work that is either full, is complete or equipped, or material that is stored on site and been charged. So that is the standard that, in this case, when the architect signs that, and Steve June, if you can correct this for me, make sure I'm saying this correctly. The architect is saying that the schedule for payment matches the work that has been done. Is that correct statement?
Correct, that is the correct statement. I'm looking at Gerber and they still, they still owe them eleven thousand dollars, for an example.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody on the call we're at? And with that, that motion remains on the floor, so I'm looking for it to be seconded or, and it will not be seconded, one of those two.
Move this along, I'll make that second.
Okay, so the motion has been seconded. We've had extensive discussion, but I'll give an opportunity again for additional discussion.
What I would like to see for ONG's gold standard, I know they're working in Groton. And Dan, you're working down there. When there's a roof leak twenty miles away, if Wayne could give you somebody a call and someone can get out of their trailer and go up to Ledger where Wayne can say, there it is, this is the condition. Because roof leaks are so hard to find, except when you're on it. I know you're on it, but you're days later. The magnet, the door doesn't hold open. Let's schedule a time for someone. ONG's got to put some effort into it. It's not that you guys are in Torrington and have to drive down here. And I know you have a project down there and you got to charge times and that. But to get up to what the gold standard is, is it, some, ONG's got to put more skin into the game, more resources. And you're close. ONG is close. I know you got to get maybe some, some approvals or something, but my God. ONG is not getting any good press from Ledger. I know we're a small town, we'll probably never build schools again. ONG will never see us again. But my God, this is, this is getting, so what I'm asking for is more resources, additional resources to Ledger that Wayne can have a conversation with point two right there. I know you guys go up weeks and look at stuff. But it's, it's the stuff that's happening right then and there, you're in Groton. Come on up. Last statement.
Is there any other discussion on the motion by any voting members prior to a vote? Okay, hearing that, the motion's been seconded, all in favor of approving the invoice as moved, signified by saying your name and I or nay, if you're voting no. Steve Justkowitz, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Jerry Smith, no.
Kate, to Puma Herb, I.
Okay, so the, we have a horn and the eyes have it. And just for ONG, this, this, you know, this payment will go out from the town in the next month. The, and again, I took a look at the, you know, some of these are, you know, the ceramic tile flooring contractor, you know, it's a small amount of money. But, you know, these folks did their work a long, long time ago. I expect that we will have only one additional invoice from ONG and that will be the final payment. And that payment, you know, I don't anticipate that we're going to make until, you know, we're satisfied that the only items that remain are warranty items and there are no punch list items left at that point. And Gary's point is valid one, again, you guys are in town. And, you know, it, it's one thing if it's a, it's a weekly check on a sa- same day all the time with, with Wayne. We get these items closed out. And while we're talking about closed out items here, Wayne, have we had any further luck with getting into the state Board of Ed system for filing for reimbursement payments?
Yeah, we've got the, the links and the things. I just have been tied up with the summer projects. I had a minute, a chance to sit down for five minutes and pull up the information that you asked for to get the marshmallow.
But you're in the system. Okay, that was my main goal here. All right. I think our production, our discussion this, this evening was very productive and it's important that we had that discussion. And we, and Dan, you've, you've heard the committee, the reluctant, but approval with the understanding of who, who's actually being helped by this, but those trades in there, you know, they, they've done their work, it's been a while, fine. Our next application for payment needs to be the final and we need to get this thing closed out. So with that, I'm going to move on to the last agenda items here. We have one invoice from Sustainable Engineering Solutions, which is Ledger Middle School, which is the commissioning contractor for this. I'd actually forgotten, they hadn't closed out their contract with us. We had a amazingly inexpensive bid on this at seventy-seven thousand dollars plus a small amount of reimbursables here. And we have an invoice from SES, this is for the middle school, this is for occupancy and operations phase, the final payment of of one thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents. That invoice is in order. And I move that we make payment.
Hey, Steve, just so you know, they've been trying to get ONG to set up a meeting for the final closeout on that school. I don't know where that stands, Dan, maybe you can update us.
The meeting has not been held. They need to backcheck some of the items that they wanted to. They wanted a couple of contractors to participate by, a, a security to call in and HVAC, BMS, JCI to call in and, and provide some services. At this point, I hadn't been able to coordinate those two crews. We're in the, no excuses today. There are no, no, no good reasons would be an appropriate response to you. And we just need to put that together. And so the committee is aware, there are some items on that, that the commissioning agent has brought up that are not in scope at the, at the Ledger Middle School, so that you'll need to be aware of and, and set aside some funds for. The, the one, we have probably four or five items over at Legend Middle School. The one that comes to mind is the exhaust for the generator, which is installed, you know, per construction documents, needs to be extended away from the building. And so it needs someone from the generator company to come out and, and look at what it's going to take to, to modify that piece of equipment and extend the exhaust pipe. Some things like that, that you may end up with, you know, with a five K to ten K item. And, and that's my
Dan, are you, are you saying that the, now, why does it need to be extended?
Because the exhaust flue is too, or the, the pipe, the exhaust pipe on the generator is too close to the structure and where air come, air can get into the building via the exterior louvers.
All right, so is that a code issue or is that just a practice issue?
It's a good built, it's good building practice. It may actually be part of Connecticut High Building requirements. I'm not sure. It's something that SES didn't like.
So at this point, Steve June, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to our engineers about that.
But the reason I ask that is if, in fact, we built it per design and that design met code, I'm not sure exactly why that has to be done. If it's a preference item, it's one thing. I want to roll back to, to SES's final bill here. So Wayne, based, you're saying that they need to hold one additional more meeting?
Yeah, there needs to be a closeout meeting that they've been trying to schedule with Dan to get everybody together. That hasn't been done. That's been for close to sixty days now, Dan?
Yep.
Now, is, is that an SES side problem or is that a ONG side problem?
It's a, it's a JCI, ONG. I've been unable to get cooperation from JCI. Part of that is, is paying their invoice.
Okay. So I guess my question on this one here, let's see, I'm looking at the invoice on this one, it is due at net thirty at the end of the month. Wayne, do, is, have you spoke with SES recently?
Through email, when this, when he was trying to set this up with Dan. And I did mention a couple of issues with the BMS system that he said he was aware of, that were still on the open items on the punch list.
Uh, Dan, am I correct that there's been billing, direct billing from SES that's been paid by Action Air on the schools for work that was outside the scope of our contract?
Almost, in that we, ONG issued payment directly to SES and took funds directly from Action Air in order to resolve SES's claim against the project duration.
All right, so when SES was, you know, they bid reasonably low here at seventy-seven or eighty thousand dollars roughly with the reimbursables. When, so when they were running into problems and having to do rework at things because of Action Air's poor performance, you guys have already compensated them from inside Action Air's money, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's interesting. Wayne, what are your thoughts about this final payment at this point?
Um, I think it's due to them. I'm just a little bit concerned about making a final payment when there's still parts of the job that aren't complete.
All right, well, with that, then I'm going to withdraw my motion for payment and we'll address this at our next meeting. So unless anyone wants to make a motion to make payment on this, we'll go ahead and table it. All right, that works. All right, back to our agenda for this special meeting. Let me roll back up. All right, the, we have the Ledger High School Track and Field Project. I believe, Wayne, there is no action on that. Is that correct?
Correct, the only thing we're waiting for is the final approval from the town council to move forward with the fence and the scoreboard.
Right, we haven't seen any back from them on that. I don't believe that the, the council, I think that's still with finance, I believe.
Yeah, did you send anything formal to them? Because we had a bid, which we needed to, we had a sole bidder on a project which we needed approval on, that they wanted just a letter. That wasn't, nothing to deal with the PMBC. But he asked us just to send a letter in and then they would take action on it. We may want to just have them send over a note to Phil Psoms.
Well, what is that, what, what's in the letter? Are they extending their bid or?
Well, this, well, the letter I had to send was, it was a sole bidder that came in slightly over what was allotted. So we needed another like six or seven thousand allotted to the project. It was for some air conditioning at the Ag Science. So I would say, you know, just a quick little note that says we would like to use the remaining funds in the, to replace the fence and the scoreboard. Take the action.
Uh, I understand. Right now, I don't have anything back from finance on that. We did formally send them the package you put together for what the cost would be with the, at the time. We have not heard anything back from them at this point, so I don't want to move any additional funds over for that. And I'll inquire back to town council. I passed that to town council, they passed it to finance. So I try to do all my interactions directly with town council rather than their subcommittees, so I'll find out what I can.
Okay, thank you.
On the high school summer projects, you know, we have the BMS bid there as a separate item, but in general, how are the summer projects coming?
Coming along very good. The classrooms at the high school are primarily painted. They do, will need a second coat once the ceilings and the rest of the stuff is finished. The ceilings, we, work began today. The ceilings, we work began today. So we'll follow up as soon as the frame is in with, get some lighting in there. The smart boards are scheduled to be installed starting on the 21st. The bathroom is being renovated. We did run into some issues there. When we tested this year, we did get some asbestos issues, so we had that abated last Saturday. So that's been taken care of. We also ran into some problems with the renovations that were done on the lower bathroom, the first set of bathrooms that were done. They did not bring the piping up high enough into the ceiling of the lower bathroom for us to reach. We think because it's plastic, we'll be able to get a, it's mostly the vent pipes. We'll be able to glue on a coupling and then slide it down and line it up. Because they're down about 12 feet. So we think we'll be able to get that resolved, but they're moving along, so we, everything should be complete and ready to go for, by the time school gets back in.
Wait, as we continue to do work with the bathrooms in the high school, I just had a discussion the other day with the mayor about possible use of some of the money that the town expects to get as federal government flowdown money. The changes that we're making in the high school bathrooms with new fixtures and things should reduce the amount of sewage going out and going to the treatment plant. I know there's discussions about potentially putting sewer lines in, in some parts of a town that would connect to that system. If you have data that can help them understand expected changes in the outflow, for lack of a better term, from the high school, that may be beneficial in their decisions. They may have already contacted you on that. But as they try to look at, you know, we make these types of changes and we change out, you know, 20 fixtures and bathrooms to low-flow toilets and things, we should be making an impact on the load on the sewer treatment plant.
Oh yeah, definitely. I'll be gladly to get together anything they need. We did, when we did these, the ones last year and this year, we're putting in what they call a hybrid urinal, so it doesn't flush every time. It flushes like once every two hours. Other than that, it's similar to a waterless urinal, where it just has a cartridge that contains the urine salts and stuff. So yeah, we've made some significant progress on the last two we did.
Yeah, and the reason I bring that up is the town engineer who's working that project on the town side and you, you know, granted you guys talk in things, but there's no magical way for that information to flow the way it should sometimes. So if you can let him know that and they can get that back to the engineers that are doing that design, may find that they, you know, that can be the make or break point to as to whether the project is feasible. And that's a good infrastructure project for the town.
Yeah, no problem. I'll reach out to them and let them know that we're doing it and see what information he needs.
Okay, and then the last item here, number one under that Roman numeral would be the, the bid package for the Gales Ferry BMS. I'd like you to address that, but there's only one thing I just wanted to say as you address it. In our bid requirements, we say that the system would be, it says all equipment supplied shall be off the shelf and non-proprietary. And then we talk about using specifically Honeywell Niagara programmable controllers, which would then be a proprietary device. And I just want to make sure that we're not saying two different things in here, but if you can address the bid package in general and what you're asking us to do.
Yep, basically, the control system in that building is, is shot. The computer program is giving us all kinds of problems. We can't get any support on it. And we can't get support on some of the controls. We're kind of piecing them together as best we can. What they proposed is the Honeywell, which is, while it's not proprietary in the fact that you have to go to a certain source for it. There are multiple supply houses where we can get those products from. It's not like the Johnson Controls stuff where pretty much you got to go back to Johnson Controls and you're going to be stuck with their pricing. So Webb and, you know, all the air conditioning and refrigeration houses carry the Honeywell stuff. So by, that way, it's not proprietary where you're stuck going to one particular vendor to purchase from. Basically, what this does is it replaces the graphics in the computer program and also updates some of the control interfaces. It's still designed to use most of the sensors and other parts that are within the building. So there's a very limited number of control systems being changed, control units and some of the graphics in the new control program.
And when I look at this, the bid package here, I see the bid package LPS 21.7, but when I look at, it talks about Gales Ferry BMS and then it talks about Ag Science on page 65 of 66 in my package, which is the last page.
And that, that's my mistake. I, I copied over and edited the one we did for some Ag Science project, so I got to remove that.
All right, so we're not, I'm not, we're approving the bid package. The fact that you have to advertise it, you know, just advertise it correctly in accordance to the rules. But all the date and the dates, you know, May 4th, 2021 at the end there, I'm not concerned with the published advertisement and advertisement. But the, the date of it's in the regular bid package for that is correct. So with that, I move that we approve the Gales Ferry BMS bid package for release.
I'll second that.
Tell you about Mr. Tominski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the bid package for release, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jessica, it's I.
Gary Tyminski, I.
Barry Schneider, I.
Kate DePommah Herb, I.
With that, the eyes have it and that motion is approved. All right, that's the last item we have on our agenda for tonight. It is a special meeting, so we can't add items to the agenda. So with that, our next meeting is on the 2nd of August. Unless I find need to ask you for a special meeting prior to that. Is there anyone today that has any issues with August 2nd? By then we should have Steve Munger online as a, a full up round. And hopefully maybe we'll have a permanent other member to fill out the committee. Anyone have any issues with that that's on the call? Okay, thank you very much for tonight. We had good discussion. It was important discussion. And with that, I move adjourned.
Thank you.
Right, good night.
Good night.